But I would offer this.
But typically, typically, our change orders do include more extensive asbestos work than what was included in the bids. Isn't that something we've seen historically?
Asbestos is high-risk and high-cost. If there's very specific questions like the one you're asking tonight, we would be happy to sit down with you and go through and map that, answer some of your questions.
Okay, but the only problem is, you want us to bid on this tonight, correct?
Yeah, absolutely.
Yeah, well, okay. The other, one other question. Let's go to 625 East High School, okay? You come in, the project, the budget was a million eight, and the bids come in at a million two. Again, you know, you're about a third off. You can't be...
Excuse me, by the time you look at the total contract cost, it's not anywhere near that.
Or, you know, the estimates are way off.
It's actually...
And if you're... Wait, if, if the facilities department, okay, they've been doing this, if they've been doing this for years and years and years. At East High School, it's not, you know, East High School was not an eighty or ninety-year-old building at all. I mean, we should have the plans and specs for East High School. We should know every nook and cranny in that school, okay?
Just as a point of clarification, the bids actually came in at 1.7 million when you add 10% and 20%, which is, which in this particular case, has $106,000 to offer to contingency as a positive. So it wasn't, it didn't, just, the budget was 1.8.
Budget, and then, and the next line, it says, "Contracts bid, contract bids have been received in the amount of millions..."
That's not fully loaded. Fully loaded is 1.7.
I understand. I understand that.
1.2 and we add 10% and 20.
Is this 1.8 a fully-loaded number?
Yes.
So then you're, you're building a contingency on top of contingency. Doesn't make sense.
No, 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 we're building the contingency in the, in the budget, which is 1.8. And in this case, the actual, with contingency, what the bids actually came in at is 1.7.
So, so you're telling me, all the numbers we have in the SIP are grossed up by 30%, correct?
No, they're not grossed up. We take a scope of work, we estimate and design what the scope of work would cost. And then by AII standards and by New York State Education Department standards, we had 10% to that for the unknowns, and then 20% on top of that for soft costs, for things that are not related to construction directly.
This 1.8 number comes directly from the SIP.
Right.
Okay?
That's the budget.
Okay, and you're telling me, and you just said, correct me if I'm wrong, that this 1.8 includes a 10% contingency.
Right.
Okay, so it's grossed up already?
It's, I don't, I guess I'm just semantics maybe, but grossed up, I'm not sure that's the term I'm...
Well, it has, it has a 30%, it has a 10% contingency, plus the 20%.
For engineering costs and art costs, that we have to have, yeah.
Yeah, okay. So the bids came in at a million two.
Right.
Right? And then, on top of that, you added...
It's that they're still exist, they're still available from the budget.
Another 10% and another 20% for the...
It's not another, it's the same 10% and the same 20%.
You added another 10, well, if that was the case, it'd be back up to a million eight, and it's not.
It's up to 1.7. It came in below budget.
1.7, and then, you're saying you're going to transfer...
$100,000 to contingency. Overall, the other projects, like I said, in aggregate, this packet is $31,000 from contingency. But in aggregate, the projects will be at 10% by the end of the year. They have been. This particular project came in underbid, and we're offering $100,000 to the overall contingency.
Same scope of work. And again, you know, going back to my other question, you know, who control, what is that contingency, who controls it, and who has oversight?
Yeah, I thought I answered that question.
No, you didn't.
Mr. President...
So you have control over it and you have oversight.
Mr. President, call a question.
I think, I have a question.
Okay.
Sorry, the question's been called. It's not debatable.
I have a question.
And it's not a roll call vote, it's a not-debatable roll.
Yeah, she's right.
Called a question.
She's calling the question, which means that we...
Mr. President, I, I guess I have a problem with the meeting, it being hijacked with calling the question when, what I thought you were doing...
Mr. President, can we have a parliamentary interpretation?
What I thought that you were doing is going down and having each person to ask questions.
Right, well, yeah.
So, you know, I think that you called the question is illegal when you said that you were going to call...
Could we have a parliamentary interpretation, Mr. President?
You were going to go down the line...
Right, well, that is, that is my, that was my intent, to have, go down the line and have folks who had questions to ask the questions. But, and our parliamentary can correct me wrong, any one of you has, has the right, under Robert's Rules of Order, to call the question anytime you want, to move to a vote on these resolutions. So, unless Commissioner Powell wanted to withdraw her call the question and let...
I don't want this line of questioning.
And let others, but I would only say, Commissioner Powell, that there are others maybe on this end that didn't get a chance to...
But understand, they had an opportunity to come to the Finance Committee, and I don't think anyone could ask any more detailed questions than Commissioner Williams has already.
Okay, I understand that, but I don't know if members down, I don't know if members down here, if you want to...
Well, I take exception to it.
Call the question stance.
Okay, well, Commissioner Powell has called the question, which means that we will vote on Resolutions 620 through 630. And I will start with a roll call vote, starting with Commissioner Williams on Resolutions 620 through 630.
Okay, 621, no. 622, no. 623, no. 624, no. 625, no. 626, no.
I'm going to 630.
627, no. 628, no. And I have a question on 629.
Unfortunately, he's already called the question.
Can't you separate these, each of these out?
Um, we're in the voting sequence of 620 through 630.
629, no. And what's the last one, 630? 630, yes.
Okay, Madam Clerk, have you captured Commissioner Williams's votes? Thank you.
I would say also, just as a comment, Mr. President, as a professional courtesy, I think that Commissioner Elliott should be allowed to ask questions.
I'll move on to 620. I'm in favor of all of my colleagues, all of you, being able to ask questions anytime you want. But I'd have to follow Robert's Rules of Order, unfortunately. 620 through 630, Commissioner Powell.
Yes to all.
620 through 630, Commissioner White.
Yes to all.
620 through 630, Commissioner Elliott.
No to 622 through 629.
Madam Clerk, have you captured that?
Yes.
Thank you. Commissioner Campos?
Yes, and I still think everyone should be able to answer, ask their questions.
Thank you. Commissioner Brennan, 620 through 630?
I sympathize. A motion to call the question is proper and is in order, and I sympathize with people's frustration, but I'm going to put my money where my mouth is, no to all until people get to ask all the questions they want to ask.
Thank you, Commissioner Brennan. And I vote yes to all. And I just want to remind my colleagues also that we had, we will have another study session on, for resolutions again, on March 18th, if I forget to mention it, at the end of the meeting. We'll now move on to Resolutions 631 through, I'm sorry, student rep, I forgot your advisory vote. You weren't even here. Were you here for the discussion?
Clarification on other resolutions.
Okay, so 620 through 630, your advisory, I'm sorry, your advisory vote, we couldn't take your advice because you weren't here, so...
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Resolution 631 through 650.
Mr. Chairman, I would ask that all these be taken separately in the event that someone has individual questions.
I will have no problem doing that. I will take them separately. Just let me, there's a typo on Resolution 634. It should read, it reads 636 for the period commencing February 27, 2009. It should say 638 for the period commencing February 27, 2009. So instead of saying 636, it should say 638.
President Evans?
Yes, Commissioner Elliott.
I don't know where this falls into play, but I really would like to understand how the, you know, call the question comes into play. I mean, does that mean that if we have questions on these other resolutions, that if somebody calls the question, that we can't answer, ask any questions, that it stops, it stops commissioners from having an opportunity to ask questions? The reason in my mind that this is so important, because when Commissioner Williams brought those questions out, it really illuminated me.
To ask them a question.
Because this process, particularly when it comes down to these capital improvement projects, it really is something that I'm still in the learning phase.
Yeah, let me answer your question. I think you're, yes, the answer to your question is yes. You or any of the other commissioners, if someone makes a motion and then is seconded and then we're having discussion, any of you can rule to call the question at any time. Usually, as a professional courtesy, you don't call the question because you want to get through the rest of the lines of questioning. So it happens very rarely. It happened tonight with Commissioner Powell, but...
So, so what ended up happening is, we will not be able to vote as intelligently as we feel that we can because someone may call a question.
Yeah, I would, I mean, I would ask that my colleagues, it's up to you all, as the person running the meeting, I'm at the mercy of you all in terms of calling the question, so it's up to you all to extend the personal courtesy not to call the question so everyone can ask their questions. But if any of you call the question, the question has to be called and you have to take a vote.
Let me just state for the record that it is really, in my view, rude when someone calls a question when we need to really understand what we are voting on. And so if it takes all night, it just takes all night. But there are those of us whose background is not in capital improvement. And so to hear what someone, the question someone asks, really is a learning mode. Certainly, we had the Finance Committee meeting, but you may not be, you may not think of all the questions during that time. So, you know, are we here to follow parliamentary rules, which is fine for order, or are we here to make sure we're doing the best in response to our children and our community? And I think with that call a question, that was just, it did not serve in the best interest of our schools or our children. Thank you.
I still need a motion for Resolution 631 through 650, and I won't say 631, I'll say 632 through 650 because 631 has been pulled. So I need a motion for Resolution 632 through 650.
But they will be taken separately?
Yes, and I'll take them separately.
So moved.
Sorry, I don't know how we can do that together.
Okay, then I'll take, okay, then I'll take a motion for Resolution 632.
So moved.
Okay, I have a motion for Resolution, for Resolution 632. Is there a second?
Second.
Okay. Questions or discussions with Resolution 632, Commissioner Brennan?
No, no questions on that particular resolution.
Okay.
632.
Commissioner Campos?
Mm-hmm.
No. Commissioner Elliott? And any questions or comments on resolutions? Okay, thank you. Vice President White?
No.
Commissioner Powell?
The question is, do I have a question?
Yes, okay. Commissioner Williams?
No.
Anything from our student rep?
Nope.
Okay. If there's no objection from anyone, is it okay? I'm going to go to, go to the vote. All those in favor of Resolution 632, please say aye.
Aye.
I abstain.
Okay, and the reason for your abstention?
I want some, my wife sits on the board.
Okay, thank you. Any noes? Okay, have you captured the abstention, Madam Clerk? Thank you. I'll entertain a motion for Resolution Number 633.
So moved.
Moved by Vice President White. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Commissioner Powell. Questions or discussions around Resolution 633, Commissioner Brennan?
None for that particular resolution.
Thank you. Commissioner Campos? Commissioner Elliott?
No.
Commissioner White?
No.
Commissioner Powell?
No questions.
Commissioner Williams?
No questions.
Okay, just no objection. I'll move to the vote. All those in favor of Resolution 633, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? The ayes have it. Thank you. Resolution Number 634, I'll entertain a motion to approve Resolution 634.
So moved.
Moved by Commissioner Powell. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Vice President White. Any questions or discussions around this resolution? Commissioner Brennan?
No.
Commissioner Campos? Commissioner Elliott?
Is this in reference to the School 14?
No, that's 637.
Yeah, I understand that, but this has nothing to do with the, with School 14, though?
Mr. Superintendent?
No, we have a contract with Expedition Learning. There are School Without Walls, they are at School 58, so we work with them as an organization.
Okay.
Vice President White?
No, no questions.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner, Commissioner Powell?
No questions.
Commissioner Williams?
No questions.
I'm sorry, student rep, do you have any, I can't believe you're still here. You've got to be studying. Any questions?
No questions.
Okay. All those in favor of Resolution 634, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
No.
One, was that a no?
No.
Okay, one no. Any abstentions? I need a motion to approve Resolution Number 635.
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Vice President White, seconded by Commissioner Powell. Questions around this resolution, Commissioner Brennan?
No, thank you.
Commissioner Campos?
Just to clarify, so when we, it looks like we approved something on November 20th for 30,000, a sum not to exceed 30,000. Did we already get to that point, and now it's an additional 30,000?
It's a great question. In fact, it's something we've been discussing internally, perhaps coming to the Board with multi-year contracts from these places. Because once you approve a particular threshold, if we go over by a dollar, we come back to you for new resolutions, why I keep seeing these things over and over again. So I'm not sure about this one specifically. If someone here has specifics about this particular resolution. But we are looking at coming back next year, coming back with these multi-year contracts and raising the bar.
And I'm sorry, I asked a question about this resolution, and I just saw this one, and I just saw that we approved it, so it's just a...
Basically, what we found is that the Temple is probably one of the best facilities for us to do PD. And as that message pervades the district, more groups and schools make use of it. So it really reflects the optimal PD context for us.
Each time we pass a threshold, we come back. So we're looking to come back to the Board and change the process and do sort of a larger blanket contract with those kinds of places.
So I'm just trying to get an understanding. So what we're planning on is $60,000 in being able to pay for this, for...
Right, for a number of PD sessions.
30,000, not 60, 30, right? Not 60.
30, right. But on top of the other 30 that we proved on, so 60 total?
Yes, yes, yes. And then maybe another before the school year is out, because we have, I think, March 20th or...
Right, and I was just getting ready to say, it's probably also reflective of that as well.
Because we have, most of our principals' meetings are there.
I was just going to ask, how many meetings do we typically hold there and what?
A lot. The artsy does, we do as well. Parking, venue, it's probably one of the cheapest places to go to in a city.
Right, okay.
Thank you.
Commissioner Elliott on 635?
Yeah, there's no place with, on school grounds that we have to do this?
Not with parking. We've had a meeting as CEO, once, we had to pay parking for almost every principal that came here.
How many people do we professionally develop at one time?
Well, meetings, I'll give you an example. When I go to speak with the artsy teachers, they can fit as many as 600, 700 teachers in a place. The venue is quite convenient. We have, there's more to it, too. When you talk about professional development, auditorium style doesn't really work for conversation. You need a place with tables, and it has that. You also don't have the kind of venue where parking is easily accessible for free within our schools. It just doesn't work.
Well, you know, we are in some tough economic times. Wherever we can save money, we need to be doing that.
It's the most cost-effective way, trust me.
You are set with that, quick?
Yes.
Okay. Vice President White?
I am concerned that it appears that in the past, there hadn't been any planning on this. You just use up your money and you come back at it again. And I just don't have a sense that, I hear what you're saying, this is the best facility. I see a couple of people nodding their heads. But I would tend to agree, in these tight financial times, Superintendent, you're telling us we need to, you know, tighten our belts and find savings. I'm just concerned that thought wasn't given to the place that we needed to be. I mean, I hear you talk about, you need a large venue where you get lots of teachers in one place, and an auditorium-style setting would, is the best setting for that.
No, 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 actually, not the best setting.
No, 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 no. Okay, you say you have a number of teachers, right, at one particular time, right?
No, no, auditorium style is not the best for them.
Okay, so then, then you don't need an auditorium.
We don't want an auditorium.
So, okay, so then you could do it at a school.
No, no, schools have auditoriums.
Okay, I'm trying to understand what kind of, hold on, Commissioner Elliott, you're talking in my ear and I'm trying to talk.
No, no, I was trying to give you some...
That's okay, that's all right, that's all right. What I'm trying to understand is, what is the venue? Why is this place so ripe for this?
We would love to take you on the tour. First, it has...
Really, I really would encourage you to join us at some of our professional development sessions, and I think seeing is believing. But also, we have tried to expand our professional development offerings. We know that's the key way to affect student achievement by making sure educators have quality professional development. So we've expanded the range of offerings, so that has facilitated us having to do so. Also, many of these sessions are held during the school day, our monthly principals' meetings. The parking would be a major challenge. Schools need to have access to their own facilities during the school day as well. So that's a major incentive.
So the timing has something to do with it. All right, so that's specific. I guess my concern is, I just, this thing seems to be just happening. You got, you get one $30,000 and one, and I know you're looking at what you're going to do going forward, but in November, you got 30,000, now you come back for another 30,000. Seems like this hasn't been planned. Seems like, and I know you're saying you're going to look at it.
Perhaps, Charles, for about two minutes, we explain two things we're working on around this kind of issue. Because again, if we have a threshold, once we go above by a small amount, we come back with a new resolution. And looking at the future, and to avoid this kind of repeatedly, repeatedly resolutions, Chuck, you want about 30 seconds?
Good evening. There are two things that Superintendent and I and the Chief of Staff have looked at recently, and that is the, looking at multi-year contracts. The Board would, would grant or not grant, as you deem appropriate, the ability to enter into multi-year contracts, so that you wouldn't have to have simply a one-year contract. You could authorize multi-year contracts and give the Superintendent the discretion to enter into a second or third-year contract. That's one piece. The other is the matter of coming back to the Board when you've pierced the $25,000 threshold. It's Board policy that if you have a $25,000 contract, 30,000, 40,000, that the Board approves it. What happens when you've got a $10,000 contract, then another $10,000 contract, and then maybe a series of one, two, three, or four thousand-dollar contracts? Often with Temple of Earth Codish and other locations, or with other venues, we have small contracts that, once we pierce that $25,000 threshold in a given year, come back to the Board again, create scheduling problems, because you have to plan out the resolution process, even though it might be a very small project. So that's one of the things that we've been discussing, is it, because, and I know your concern is oversight. Remember that you'll have quarterly reports for all contracts, regardless of how large or how small, if they're under 25,000.
Thank you. Any other?
The only other thing I'll add is, I understand what you're saying, but I don't know that this, the district, I don't hear the district saying, okay, these are the other venues that we've looked at. I'm thinking, and I could be wrong in this, that we've just sort of gotten ourselves into the mode of using the Temple and not looked at other sites. I find it hard to believe, and I'll go, as I have before, I've gone to sites, I'll go to that site, I'll take a look at it. But my guess is, there are probably other sites that we could be using. That's my guess. And also, let me add, and I think you understand this, that when you do these kinds of contracts, you're not getting the best dollar value. You know, 30,000 here, 30,000 there. We should be negotiating over the long haul for a better deal. I bet you this gets a lot cheaper, even with the Temple, if we have, we negotiate a year-long or two-year-long or multi-year contract. The other thing that I would ask the administration to do is, I'm thinking, I've been to a lot of meetings in this community, churches, recreation centers, schools. There, the Temple can't be the only place where you could fit teachers for, sort of follow-up training. I just find that very hard to believe. I'm sorry?
Yeah, but...
Well, I understand that, but I'm saying, my concern is, past practice has been, oh, we get ourselves into a mode of doing something, meeting at one place, and that's what we do. We pay 30,000 here, we pay 30,000 again. And I, my guess is, there's a place out there. It could be a church, it could be a rec center, where we could be there as well. That's my guess.
Okay. Just let me say that I would encourage my colleagues that if they know of any of these places where you could fit 600 teachers in one room, sitting at round tables, we really should let, with parking, to let the administration know. I think we're out there in the community, so if you know of places, let them know. I'll tell you that I am not aware of any places off the top of my head. I've been to every new teacher orientation that takes place at the Temple, and I would urge my colleagues to also attend that. It is a great facility, but I would be interested to find out if there are other facilities. If there are, I don't know of any, but I think we should let the administration know if we do know of any others. Commissioner Powell?
No questions.
Commissioner Williams?
No questions.
Okay. All those in favor of Resolution Number 635, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
No.
Opposed.
Okay, how many opposed, is that two? Okay. Madam Clerk, you captured that?
Excuse me.
I'm sorry.
I'm very sorry, but I believe we have four opposed.
Four, how many, all the...
Did you not just say you were opposed?
I think, there's three, I think, I have.
That's three, okay. Myself, Commissioner Elliott. Oh, I'm sorry, Malik, did I misunderstand you?
I thought that I counted three opposed.
Okay, no, there's four.
I didn't hear...
Three, myself, Sinta, and Van.
Yep, three.
Is that correct?
Yeah, just three.
Three, am I right? Did the resolution pass it?
These old ears.
Okay.
All right.
We'll now move on to Resolution Number 636. I'll entertain a motion to approve Resolution Number 636.
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Seconded by Commissioner Powell. Questions around Resolution Number 636?
President Evans?
Yes. Commissioner Elliott?
Why is an art program necessary for students who've been released from juvenile lockup? Why an art program?
Why not?
Commissioner, I mean, Superintendent Bresary?
We thought it was, I guess, a great idea for kids who're coming out of incarceration.
Different way to release that.
Any other questions, Commissioner?
Yeah, sorry.
I'll get to you. I'm going this way. Anything else, Commissioner Elliott?
No.
Okay. I'm sorry, Mr., did you want to, Mr. DiMartino?
The art program, the expectation is that we're beginning to set up transitional programs back into the community for our, for our students who have been incarcerated. We're hoping that this is part of a therapeutic intervention setting for them.
Better said than I did, sir. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner White?
Yeah, it'd be helpful to know, I think this is a great idea, but it'd be helpful to know what else is being done in this area. As you know, I have frequently asked the administration to look into how we're transitioning kids from incarceration back into school. And I, quite frankly, would be willing to spend a lot more money on this kind of program. So it's good to see it, but I'd like to see more of it.
It's a big, it's a beginning. We have, we have much more work to do.
Okay, great.
Hey, I'm sorry, I got Commissioner Elliott and Commissioner Williams. Commissioner Campos stepped out. Commissioner Brennan, did you have questions on 636?
Not on 636.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Powell, questions on 636?
No questions.
Commissioner Williams?
No questions.
Student rep?
Yeah, I was trying to get some clarification earlier to this. Now that I look at the resolution again, are this, does this extend to all arts, as in music, art, as in hand painting, drawing, and all that stuff?
Specifically, right now, it's my understanding that it's, that it's the actual arts, painting and that type of art specifically.
Okay, and do we know about how many kids are attending this program when they are out of, at a time? I mean, is it where a group goes at a time, and then maybe a following month later, another group comes from out of incarceration or...
The number of students will actually vary according to the number of students released in, back into our program.
Might help for you to know that there's a, kind of a prelude to this piece for transitional after. While students are incarcerated, we have been operating with the Arts and Cultural Council for many years in partnership with the New York State Literacy Center for the students to do... for the students to do, um, poetry and creation of music with lyrics to express their emotions through some sort of behavioral, um, psychological intervention. So, by doing that, they create a product that they are actually able to sell, in terms of their poems and their CDs. From that, we are trying through these grants, excuse me, to provide them with transitional services, so when they go back to the schools, they can continue in the arts that they've been working in, so that they have something to showcase with their peers. So, this is a beginning. These are seeds for what they want to do.
So, is this, um, program only so long? When that child goes back to school and, or if they are in a transition program, do they only have so long to be in this program?
Right, once they've transitioned completely, then they will exit the, the program and be, um, mainstreamed with their peers.
So, there's no follow-up opportunity after they've left this program?
This is the follow-up opportunity to the one that they had while they were incarcerated.
Okay.
Okay?
Thank you.
Thank you. Um, Commissioner Elliott, that?
Uh, just, um, I was wondering why this resolution needed to come before us with, when it's only forty-five hundred dollars? Why did you all feel that it had to come before us?
Mr. Superintendent?
Well, if you take a look, it says not to exceed twenty-five thousand. Chuck, any idea why? Do we anticipate going to twenty-five thousand plus?
This was a mistake, wasn't it? It wasn't supposed to come before.
Not a mistake. Is there was an explanation?
We were just discussing a moment ago, the, the fact that the, the practice now is that once you pierce the twenty-five thousand dollar threshold, even if you spend a dollar, we come back to the Board. If you look at the top, the Whereas Clause makes reference to a twenty-five thousand dollar contract. Now, we're at the threshold, so with this new, uh, resolution before you, it's for forty-five hundred dollars. If we're even at, uh, a thousand dollars, you, we would have to come back to you.
So, this, this program is a total?
Twenty-nine.
Total cost.
Twenty-nine thousand, five hundred dollars.
The program may be forty-five hundred, but we have existing contracts with this organization of twenty-five thousand.
Right. Commissioner Powell, any, um, uh? Okay, did I get everyone, did I get all the questions in? Okay, um, all those in favor of Resolution Number Six Thirty-Six, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Um, Commissioner, uh, President Evans, I, I'm gonna vote no, because I don't have any supporting documentation that tells me that this program works or not.
Okay.
And I guess I just don't want to, again, we're in a tough economic time. And, uh, those who know me know that I support, um, the, uh, students who are in jail, but I think that, um, I don't have enough information that says to me to vote in favor of this. And again, we are in very difficult economic times.
Okay, thank you.
So, my vote is no.
Thank you. Madam Clerk, have you captured that? And, and, I'm sorry, student rep advisory vote?
Um, I'm gonna abstain, because I wanna, uh, clarify this with the person who's running the program.
Uh, you're gonna get a little parliamentary lesson here. You either have to vote yes or no. You only can abstain if you have a family member involved in the program, or you, you, you have to vote yes or no, unfortunately.
You're not gonna tell us you've been in jail, are you?
So, you, so you vote, so you can vote no?
I'm gonna vote no, because I don't have the correct clarification.
Okay.
Mr. President, may, may, may I say something? You know, it really would help if we get these, um, the questions ahead, if we can provide the kind of information the Board is looking for. It's difficult at the meeting to have everyone attached to every single program to be present to, to, to give the details. I can't bring my entire staff here, um, on Thursdays. So, please ask the questions ahead. We'd be more than happy, I'm sure the folks from the New York State Literacy Center would be happy to be here and talk about how wonderful this program would be.
Thank you, and I'll remind again, everyone, we have a study session on, um, March eighteenth.
Well, and we had a study section last week, and nobody asked any questions. Nobody, none.
Okay, um, we're gonna move to Resolution Number Six. We're moving to Resolution Number Six Thirty-Se-
It's a grant, is the only point.
These are grant dollars?
Right.
So.
We don't understand.
Right.
So, I mean, it's being funded by.
What do you mean, you don't understand?
We're maximizing the grant dollars by funding this program. This is not affecting the local budget. So, in terms of Board support, it's a, um, point of information for you to understand how the programs are being funded and how they're being supported. It's not impacting.
Okay, and then I'm gonna give parliamentary lesson number two to the staff.
Yes.
The, 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 the vote has already been cast, so thank you, I appreciate your, um, follow-up, but the vote's been done, so thank you. I keep this in my book. I keep this book in my desk, up here, so. We're gonna move to Resolution Number Six Thirty-Seven. Um, I'll entertain a motion to Resolution Number Six Thirty-Seven. Being that I've already missed CSI, um, I still might be able to catch CSI tonight. Resolution Number Six Thirty-Seven. Can I have a motion?
So moved.
Thank you. Moved by, um, Vice President White, seconded by Commissioner Powell. Discussion, um, or questions around Resolution Six Thirty-Seven? Commissioner Brennan?
Thank you. We've all received a letter tonight and started to hear a presentation that was limited by the three minutes. You know, the three-minute speaking rule that we have. Concerns have been expressed that seem reasonable to me, that questions that the Rochester Parent Union members had were not answered or followed up. Would anyone care to speak to that or clarify that?
Mr. Superintendent?
I, I believe the question was asked, uh, by two Commissioners this week about, uh, parent, about, uh, I guess, not addressing parent concerns. We had extensive responses provided by email to the Board of Education this week. That was a lot, a lot of engagement, not just to staff, but to parents, uh, going back as far as June of two thousand and, are we nine now, or eight? Two thousand?
Nine.
And eight. Sorry, I'm getting my years mixed up. Mary could talk a bit more to that, um, if she'd like to come up, but extensive, extensive conversations.
With the parents?
With parents, yes.
And responses?
With translators, I believe we have many.
I'd be interested to know what, what this derives from, then.
Uh, I responded to, it was from Sister, uh, I forgot the name, yes. Uh, there was an extensive response to that, to that letter as well.
Yes, I was on that. But this is a subsequent.
We also, Commissioner Brennan, good evening. We provided a plan in response to the Excellence and Student Achievement Committee, uh, feedback on the twelfth. We have had a meeting in January, we held a meeting, we provided the feedback, we provided the feedback. It's outlined in your proposal to phase out fourteen. And I also, an email to you through the Superintendent this week, provided, um, our Q and A that's going out, ready to go to parents tomorrow. We'd really like to do as much of this as possible in person. As the Superintendent said, we have a lot of interpreters on hand, since there are many languages spoken. So, um, we have the FAQ, and we plan to be holding meetings on an ongoing basis to, um, assist all parents through the process.
And in the letter, actually, we went point by point and responded to the claims made in the letter. Uh, I believe there was a question that we did not respond to, parents direct, uh, inquiry was, schools were being closed. We actually provided the response that was given that evening, uh, as well as the documents that were shared. There were breakout rooms, uh, with different languages spoken to explain exactly what would be happening, um, at the school. I mean, I've, I've phased out a number of schools in my career. This was one of the most extensive engagements I've seen, honestly, in all the years of doing this work.
Thank you. Commissioner Brennan, any others?
Well, first of all, I appreciate, um, you know, the work of the staff and the work of the Superintendent and their, and their efforts to be responsive to the questions that, that, uh, in response to the email we received earlier.
Yes.
It's, it's, and I'm not trying to be dilatory or, or difficult here. I'm, we have this communication from the, the leadership of the Parents Union there, who, who seem to, who, who seem to have a great many unanswered questions, and I was wondering what we might do, what the consequences of us possibly delaying action on this until the next meeting would be to make absolutely certain that these questions are answered. I'm just trying to be careful that everybody that has concerns, and certainly the leadership of a, of a, of a parent group.
I don't know if the letter came from the leadership, but, but we did, we did get the same, same email, and I believe we responded to the email, uh, several times, um, including what was done and what will be done in the future as well in terms of engagement. That evening, when I was at fourteen, again, I believe that also says that I, I walked out early. My, my portion of the agenda was to open and talk about the general pieces, uh, and then, of course, break out into separate rooms. When you have a, a community that spoke a number of different languages, uh, it was unproductive to have one big mass meeting. So, we started with me opening, with Mary actually opening, then I went after Mary. It broke out into separate locations where different languages were spoken and, and, and things were translated. So, there was extensive, uh, uh, engagement. In fact, again, if you go back to the letter, Commissioner, we, we addressed, we actually responded. Mary took the time to go, to put the quote from the letter and the actual response that we provided to, uh, to that community. So, I, I believe the letter to be inaccurate, um, in terms of, of, of its claim. Parents have been engaged with, in that community extensively. I met with school-based planning going back to as far as June of last year, uh, in discussing this issue. So, we've not been, uh, secretive, we've been very transparent about, about what's been happening at fourteen. Back in June, we were clear in saying that we weren't sure exactly what the outcome would be, but this was on the table. So, we've engaged, uh, the parents, and we will keep engaging, uh, the parents as we move forward in this process.
Again, I appreciate the efforts that have been made, but this communication is from, or at least they're identified as the co-chairpersons of the Rochester Parents Union. And they seem to, to continue to have concerns, so my question again is, what would be the downside or the negative consequences of us delaying this one more month until we can be certain that, that, that group and its leaders had their questions addressed? I'm not in any way denigrating, or, and I very much appreciate your efforts, but would it not be, um, better practice to be particularly sure that everybody's been heard from that needs to be heard from?
Planning to phasing out of a school involves a lot of different moving pieces, uh, uh, including negotiation with, with, with the RTA and placing teachers and placing students who are maybe displaced from fourteen. The longer we wait, um, the less likely they'll get the first choices. Plus, given the fact that we, this is tied to the opening of a new school, so the planning for that would be delayed as well. So, when you look at all the moving pieces, yeah, we, we get behind the A-ball, uh, in terms of making sure this is, this is executed flawlessly. Again, we cannot start the opening of a school late in the spring. It just makes things much more difficult as we move forward.
Any other questions, Commissioner Brennan?
No.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Campbell?
No, I just wanna thank the administration, because we had a very flushed-out conversation in the Excellence for Student Achievement Committee, and having the plan in action was something that we were extremely diligent about, and being able to see the engagement pieces and seeing those. So, I'll be interested just in hearing the progress and ensuring that those things that were in the plan are actually executed.
Absolutely.
So, thank you very much.
Thank you. Um, Commissioner Elliott?
Um, I, I, well, let me just, you know, I'm gonna have to bracket my emotions, because I attended fourteen school, uh, in the seventh grade. But here's my issue, and it's the same issue that I spoke with the Superintendent about on the ISS plan. The issue is, there seems to be a disconnect. And, um, I, that's my concern, that there is, that, that we're not, um, or seemingly opening it up sufficiently enough so that people can participate. And what we say is communication may not be communication for others. And so, that's my concern, but I would ask, have this, want to ask this question. Is School Fourteen on the SIR list? Is there a reason that it has to be closed by the state?
Fourteen is not on the SIR list.
So, why are we focusing on this one as opposed to other schools that are on the SIR list?
We had this extensive conversation at the, at the Student Achievement.
Yeah, but I wasn't there, so.
No, I, I understand.
Just share a little bit of it.
No, I understand that.
All right.
And we should not wait for the state to close a school for us. And, and in fact, we have several, so, so schools in, in the district.
Right.
School Fourteen is underperforming, it has nearly fifty percent special-letting English language learners. When you look at the concentration of special-needs students in that building, uh, it is unfair, uh, to, to, to take all leap students and you can only go to one place. We need to begin to, if can, forgive me if that's not a word, to deconcentrate our schools. When you look at the report we had on special education, uh, we've had a practice in our district of placing kids who are special needs in few schools in the district. This is an attempt to begin to integrate the district as much as possible. It is, there, there is, uh, and we made this clear as well at the Student Achievement, um, committee meeting, that the expression of fifty-eight is in part, uh, has something to do with this as well. For fifty-eight school is, is highly sought-after, so we're looking to replicate that. It was a request made by the Board of Education as well, uh, and something we believe in, in creation of a portfolio of schools, that you replicate, uh, successful practices. But fourteen is underperforming, uh, its scores are not great, um, and even if the staff were to be the best in the world, they would heat, hit, they would plateau, because you cannot have that kind of concentration in a school building and expect it to, to reach, um, um, the highest performing levels. Closing schools are not easy things to do, and, and of course, because you went to fourteen, I'm sure you have wonderful memories of, of School Fourteen, and often that, that happens when you close schools, because people, uh, have fond memories of, of being, being in that school. But that should not stop us from making the decisions that we need to make to create the kinds of schools our parents are looking for. Fourteen only had about ten parents who chose a school to be there, um, while many of the schools in the district are sought-after. So, we need to create the kinds of places that our parents are asking for. Fourteen is not a highly sought-after school. In fact, it has one of the lowest, not the lowest, but one of the lowest, uh, um, chosen or, or selection rates in the city.
Thank you. Vice President White?
Yeah, uh, real quickly, uh, Mr. Superintendent, it says six weeks this letter. It says, "Six weeks later, the, the parents and families at school number fourteen still do not have answers to the pressing questions regarding the displacement of their children." Do you have, are you aware of any questions that have not been answered?
No, and, and, and I beg to, to, to say too, that this is, again, um, give my opinion, one person's opinion. And, uh, we, we read the letter, every question that's been asked would be forthright, uh, and, and, and forward. In fact, when teachers calling to me at Dunkin' Donuts and at, or, uh, when I was a speaker at commencement at Wesleyan, always very honest with people about what we tried to do. Again, closing schools always come with a motion. I don't know this individual well, uh, we did read the letter, and we believe it to be inaccurate. Every question that's been asked would be very, very forthright about, about what the answers are.
Secondly, um, the third, what these be, appears to be the third or fourth paragraph says, "Second, the current plan to close School Fourteen calls to eliminate the universal, uh, pre-kindergarten classroom and not replace it with another." You discussed this.
Yes, I did.
During the committee meeting. Could you provide a summary of?
Absolutely, and we did as well, um, when, when the question came up at the staff meeting. The new school that we're opening, the new EL school, we don't have a name for it yet, uh, we have to wait for the Board resolution. We'll not have a pre-K, the mother does not call for that. Uh, we're not wanting for pre-K seats in our city. We, we look at the totality of seats, um, that we have in, in, as, as offering. Uh, we did a best job in the Big Five in placing pre-K kids in, in, in our schools. We have one of the best pre-K programs in, in the country right here. Uh, we, we, we love pre-K, in fact, we created three-year-old programs at Franklin Montessori. We're looking to expand, uh, because one school will not have it does not mean that the, the city will, will be at a shortage of pre-K seats. Uh, again, we have some district programs, we have some CBO programs. I don't have a preference of one over the other, as long as they provide a quality education for our kids. Again, I've always said that, that whoever does it best should get the dollars, because this is not about us owning anything. This is about providing a quality program, uh, for our children. Uh, we don't have a shortage of pre-K seats. Uh, we have advocates that we deal with in here at Central Office who push for this, as well as community. Pre-K program, the pre-K program in our city has tremendous, uh, community support, and they would, trust me, they would be here in the thousands if we're closing seats, uh, in, in the pre-K. And they're very supportive. We're not, again, this new school will not have it, and fourteen will be phased out. Uh, in fact, this year, by the way, we, we lowered the number of, of, of seats for the, for fourteen. We're not making a big noise about it, no one complained. The fact is that, that we do have enough seats, but if the demand keeps rising, we'll provide it, because we, we wanna make sure we serve our children.
Just very quickly, does anybody here know, I mean, perhaps Superintendent knows, I, I have not had the fortune of meeting, uh, these co-chair people, um, Arya and Christopher, can't pronounce the last name. Does anybody know them, who they are?
I don't know them.
Does, does anybody, is anybody familiar with the Rochester Parent Union? I, I, again, I apologize for being ignorant, but this is the letter that everybody is referencing.
Yes.
And I, I'd like to know who these people are, or their credibility, or?
And, and as you know, Commissioner, uh, if we received a call, Mary and I would have been happy to meet with, with the group. We never, I never got a call, in fact, I, I received a, by, with the Committee of the Board of Education.
And just one final note, I, I agree with Commissioner Campos, that, uh, it was a very thorough meeting, comprehensive discussion on, uh, the subject. I think Commissioner Williams and Commissioner Campos and I were there, and, uh, the administration answered every possible question we put to them, and they were, it was not an easy thing, uh, so I appreciate their effort.
Just let me say, I was on this board when we closed a couple of schools, and this process is, is painful, but at the same time, it's much more, uh, this is much more organized than previous ones. I can tell you, there were some nasty ones.
If I may, if I may, uh, as well, one of the things that we are pushing a lot of folks to do is not to make closure be a facilities conversation, but an academic one. to make closure be a facilities conversation, but an academic one. Again, we've been transparent and say that there is a little piece of this that has to do with facilities as well, but the overarching drive has to do with academic achievement. When I walked in last year into the district, one of the first act that I did was to change leadership at school fourteen, because I was concerned what was going on at the school. So a lot has been done with the school, and because of new leadership, there's been some improvement, but we also know that the school will plateau. But our conversation moving forward, even with FMP, will have an academic slant, because again, it's not about finding space or facilities, it really is about providing a quality program. It's about providing a system of great schools, as Commissioner Elliott often talks about, making every school a school of choice in our city.
Commissioner Powell?
No questions. This was first presented to us a long time ago, though, not, it didn't first come to us in the Excellence in Student Achievement Committee. How long ago did you make your presentation to the board?
We've been talking about this going back to, I believe, last May or last June.
Was that the presentation for us?
We've been talking about, as part of a portfolio conversation. Yes.
I just wanted to try to put it in its calendar time frame.
Thank you.
That's very helpful.
Commissioner Williams?
Yeah, just two points. And one, I want to pick up on what the question that Commissioner Elliott had and your response, Mr. Superintendent. It had to do with the overall academic achievement of school fourteen. And the problem, yes, what I'm grappling with is, I looked at that, the Grade Five Social Studies New York State test results, and in it, you had school fifty-eight, a hundred percent of the students scored at levels three and four. School nineteen did the same thing, followed by school fourteen, where ninety-eight percent of the students, grade, fifth grade students scored at levels three and four. And then, you know, as you go through the report, one of the things that I noticed that there, there are five schools, five elementary schools that are on the schools in need of improvement lists. Three have been there for one year, one had been on the list for five years, and another for four years, and none of these have been school fourteen. I mean, school fourteen, all the indices, at least on the fifth grade social studies tests, have been up there with nineteen, school nineteen and school fifty-eight. And the other thing about it too is, school nineteen had a huge jump in their scores from last year to this year, but fourteen has been fairly even. So I mean, I, this whole notion that they aren't doing well academically, you know, just, the report says something totally different.
Well, the report was only on the fifth grade social studies. Commissioner, if you take a look at the overall district, we tend to do quite well on that test across almost all the schools. And you can also have aberrations in schools, where one year you get a one-year spike. And let me also say too, that whenever you announce and begin to talk about closure of a school, they always improve. Always happens. It's been my experience for twenty-two years. But the fact is, if you take a look at ELA mathematics, the school does not rank in the top in the district, in fact, it ranks near the bottom. When you take a look at the trajectory, look at multi-year, not just one year, but multi-year test scores, you will see a lot of concern. When you take a look at the demand the school has for the district, it's very, very low. When you take a look at the fact that, again, nearly, nearly more than 50%, if that's 60%? I forgot the exact number.
Forty-two percent are English language learners versus a district average of 13%. And special education is seven, 16%, 17%, and the district is six.
So it's not, you don't have a combination of 50, 59% of the school is a combination of Sped and L.
Right, but even, but given that, then that makes those results for the fifth grade even more astonishing. I mean, if you have a high proportion of students who are ELA and you're doing.
No, no, but not every child is tested every single year in those grades. Let's be, let's be real, fifth grade does not represent the entire school. So let's look at, again, data is a funny thing. You can look at one grade in the zoom, the entire school represents, it does not. Jeanette is here or not, but the fact is, if you take a look at the ELA math, the school is not ranked number one. One of the questions that was asked at the Student Achievement was, could you slowly change the demographic of the school for it to become that? The answer is yes, you could. You could take seven to eight years and do it slowly. And my response was, do we want incremental gains or do we want radical change? We can open a school tomorrow on September that will be highly sought after by parents in this community, or we can wait five to 10 years and change fourteen to what it can be.
Okay, but then, again, going back to the other point though, there are, there are five other schools that are on the schools in need of improvement lists, and fourteen is not.
I want, I want to address, I forgot about that piece. When you're looking at portfolio and changing the configuration of schools in the city, while academic achievement drives the agenda, there are all the factors you have to take a look at, what you can and cannot do at the same time. Right now, for instance, we have a huge debate going on at Wilson about this configuration, and one that needs to be thought out carefully, because as we, if we decide to change, if the community decides to change one, it will impact the rest of the schools in the district. So I can say that forty-five school doesn't do very well, and decided to close it tomorrow. The impact on the rest of the schools in the city would be tremendously more than phasing out fourteen's school. So there is a, if I can explain this well, there is a convenience factor, this is the best word I can come up with right now, that also drives part of the conversation. What can you do here without being completely detrimental to the rest of the district while making the changes you need to make along the way? So schools, all the elementary schools are severely underperforming, we will look at it down the road, but I can tell you, right now, the largest driving agenda for us has to be secondary schools, and making the kinds of progress and options available for our children. Fourteen, again, the overriding conversation is academic achievement, but concentration or aggregation of special needs kids is also a driven factor. The fact that we need to expand fifty-eight and create a new EL school is a third factor. This is a lot that goes into the pot to make decisions about what to do, what not to do in creating a portfolio of schools. Is fourteen the neediest school in the district? No, it's not. But at the same time too, to do everything else you need to do, to tackle, not a school right now, would not provide the kind of sort of lever that we need to create the greatest amount of change that we can right now. So it need not be the first, but it would not give us the bigger bang that we need to get into providing a quality, wanted seat for our district. And fourteen, again, is not at the top. If you take a look at ELA math across the district, it's near the bottom third in the district.
Okay, one, one final question.
Wait, can I just jump in quickly?
Two seconds.
I provided some of that data in the memo to you in your board packets, so, and I have Jeanette here too, to speak a little more if you'd like to know more about the data.
Yeah, I saw, and even when I went back after I saw your report, I mean, it said, ah, oh, maybe they aren't as bad as people said they were. And even, but the numbers themselves, even in terms of the math and everything else, they, you know, they weren't at the bottom of the.
They were 27th.
Yeah.
Out of thirty, right, out of the forty-eight, three through eight schools.
Okay.
The thirty-eight, the thirty-eight schools, but if we did three through eight, yes, you would be 48. So they were 27th at that time. They have increased, you're correct, but, but not enough where you could see where they started off at, they're declining. And when you talk social studies, you have to, you cannot compare the ELA and the social studies. You can compare social studies with social studies, because that's one measure of a fifth grade, and it's 80% of the students that can be tested. So they, they had high scores, but you have to be very careful that that's one subject area. So we have to look across the whole, the whole board on what they're doing. And you're right, they're not one of the worst, but they're not one of the best.
What, in?
As far as ELA and math.
Oh, okay.
So.
The Calvary matrix for the state looks at, looks at ELA math in the elementary schools. I mean, while it's wonderful to watch schools do well with the social studies in the fifth grade, but if you take a look at the progression of all the schools, we tend to do well as a district anyway when it comes to the fifth grade. But again, it's not just one factor, I'm trying to really be clear about that, that looking at the portfolio and looking at the school, while it may have increased, I mean, I guarantee you, look at any research, concentration of special needs kids, the school will plateau. It will not go above. And I'll tell you, even if you choose, when we begin to push the high school closure conversation, I guarantee it, as a school phases out, high school, and they get close to the end, their graduation rates tend to soar. One is that the numbers get really small, and two, all of a sudden, people begin to pay a lot of attention to that. So the instructional apathy that you still define in many dysfunctional schools tend to begin to dissipate as people leave, as the numbers get smaller.
Okay, and then, last question, Commissioner. One final question. If that's the case, if the decision's been made to close them, I mean, why prolong the agony over a two or three-year period? Why not just say, look, we're gonna close the school, and because if you, if that decision's been made.
Yes.
We have enough time to place those 300-plus students.
Four hundred plus, yes.
Yeah, 300-plus students in another, another setting in between now and next September.
That's a fantastic question, and one I really want to address as well. One wonderful thing about phasing out is that it allows for the impact on the rest of the system to be minimal. It also allows for children in the school not to be displaced. So as you phase out, students who are currently at fourteen, except for perhaps maybe first grade.
Thirty-six students.
Thirty-six students would not need to go anywhere, they can remain with their school and graduate with their school. That really was a huge piece for us. We don't want to impact, because again, if you take 400 students and move them at once, it will impact all of the elementary schools in the city, and you don't want to do that. So you want to do this thoughtfully and progressively, and make sure that you don't displace too many kids or too many adults at the same time, and you take your time for that, for that, for that to happen slowly. And it's not a way to agonize the pain, but it's, or make it more agonizing, is to make sure that you're doing this in a way that you're not destroying or impacting all the schools in the district.
Okay. Thank you, Commissioner Williams. Commissioner Powell, you had an alibi?
Yes, but Commissioner Brennan had a question, and has had for some.
No, I'm gonna go back this way in a second.
No, I'm fine.
Okay, so go ahead and ask your question.
Okay, it's more a comment. Another measure for when a school needs to close is around our school choice policy. A school that has, is under-chosen, and this is a school with almost no neighborhood population that is not being chosen by its neighborhood, or by those within the 1.5 miles, or by those in the zone. The children who are there are there primarily because they were placed there, because, whether it's because they were, in point of fact, it became a location for English language learners because there was space to dump them, and that is not the grounds on which a school should be allowed to thrive, or should attempt, have to attempt to thrive. The same with a special ed population. It had the space and therefore it became the dumping ground. Whether people like that phrase or not, it's, it's the dynamic that happened. When you have space that nobody claims, a void will be filled one way or another. And I'm a little surprised that there's even this much pushback, because the families who are there didn't choose to be there, quite frankly.
Commissioner White, I saw you had.
Just real quickly, you know, what I found most significant was that, that number that you gave, 27, they ranked 27 in ELA and math scores out of, what, 38 schools? Is that right?
Right.
Is that right? So it wasn't certainly near the top, wasn't even in the middle, was near the bottom. And then, one might ask rhetorically, well, why would we wait for it to be put on the SIR list? And I think that's might, that might be where it was going, because whenever you have this kind of concentration of special needs students, and I accept your characterization, Commissioner Powell, literally a dumping ground. We weren't doing those kids any service by putting them all in one school, that basically was very unfair. That's a school, notwithstanding that they have great teachers there, committed professionals, loving parents, that school should not have been created in that way in the first place. It ought to be closed, because how it was created was wrong for our kids.
President Evans, if everybody has asked question, I'd like to make a motion that this resolution be tabled until we can, that, until parents and the community who have some concerns about this issue, that they're resolved. And I'm saying tabled for one month.
I'll second that for purposes of discussion.
Second for a purpose of discussion, but a table has no discussion. A table goes straight to a vote.
Okay, you got me.
So there's a second, and I'll take the table to the vote, and I'll start with Commissioner Williams to table.
Yes.
Commissioner Powell?
To table, no.
Commissioner White?
No.
Commissioner Elliott?
Yes.
Commissioner Campos?
No.
Commissioner Brennan?
Yes.
I vote no. We're now back on the original motion to phase this school out. I mean, this, I ought to say this before I do a roll call vote on this. This school kind of reminds me of the elementary school of Monroe and Jefferson, and folks should remember that we were doing a redesign plan because they were on, because they're in danger of getting on the SIR list, so I think we need to start getting ahead of these things before they boil over to something. But I, but I think that we, what I'm hearing from folks from fourteen is that we need to make sure that we stay committed and, and communicate with them, and make sure that they get the best possible education at wherever it is that they transition to. With that, roll call vote, Commissioner Brennan?
No.
Commissioner Campos?
Yes.
Commissioner Elliott?
No.
Commissioner White?
Yes.
Commissioner Powell?
Yes.
Commissioner Williams?
No.
I vote yes. I believe that's four to three. We will now move on to resolution number 638. This is, I believe, for the, is this for the new school? No, this is not. School, yes, it is, for the new school. So we're coming up with names. I like Booker T. Washington. But let's, a motion to approve 638?
So moved.
Moved by Commissioner Powell, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Vice President White. Discussion around this motion, questions?
This is to place the kids from fourteen's school in this facility.
No, this is to expand fifty-eight.
No.
No, new school altogether.
This is to name the new school.
Excuse me?
Mr. Superintendent, why don't you speak to this?
Sure, Mary?
This is a proposal to start a new Expeditionary Learning Elementary School, so separate from fifty-eight, but to serve more elementary school students, to provide this very popular and successful option to more students and families. So it's a new elementary school to be K to six, to partner with Expeditionary Learning, and for fall 2009 to start with grades K through two.
Being housed at 690?
Temporarily housed at 690 St. Paul Street.
And you add your, how long?
I look to facilities, but hopefully, no more than a couple of years.
Mr. Superintendent? Commissioner Williams asked, for how long do you think this new school would be at 690?
We're hoping to move it as quickly as possible, so the FMP may decide exactly how long. Hopefully, no more than two years. But FMP process, we're hoping to make the fifty-eight expansion, the new school, as well as the Montessori school at Franklin, our priority, as well as the school that's at the, help me.
Flower City?
The one I was supposed to go to, the.
Sacred Heart?
Sacred Heart.
Sacred Heart. Those are, we're gonna push as priorities with the FMP, but of course, the FMP board will decide, but we'll make a hard push to make those priorities for us.
One, one other question. So we'll have, fifty-eight will now go from, fifty-eight at 200 University will go from K to?
Twelve.
Twelve. And then, the new school will go from K to six.
Yes.
So now, what happens in seventh grade? Will the, for the kids who are in, who are leaving sixth grade at fifty, at 200 University, they will automatically enroll into the seventh grade at, at 200 University, correct?
Yes, they have that option, yes.
Okay. And then, what happens, two things. What happens to the students in the new EL school? I mean, you, pretty soon you start to get a funnel in terms of the number of students you could accommodate. And, sort of in conjunction with that, is it the case that the only way that you could get into seventh grade in fifty-eight would be that you had to have been in K through six, or not?
Or just too early to be.
No, fifty-eight is accepting, we've already surveyed, and most of the parents there want to stay, but there'll be three sections starting in seventh grade, so they have about a third, probably about 75 students, and we're looking at approximately a third of the students will be from sixth at fifty-eight. But then they will take in students from across the district. So the students at the new school as well could apply at seventh to the new, the expansion of fifty-eight.
But will the students at the new EL, as well as students throughout the district, will there be a lottery system? Or will the students in the new EL automatically gain admission to, to fifty-eight or 200 University?
We're hoping that the kids of fifty-eight stay.
We're, we're hoping that the kids of 58 stay at 58 and grow with the school.
Okay, but then what about the, the kids who are at the other EL school?
Well, the EL school will be taking like kindergarten and first grade in September.
I know, but I mean, but down the road, when they.
They can apply to any high school in the city that they choose to go to. If there are seats available at 58, they can certainly do that as well.
Okay, then the students who are coming in from outside, who are not at 58 or not at 200 University?
Yes.
Will that be a lottery system?
Well, right now, 58 is, is a citywide school. So our guess is that kids who are at 58 get first, first choice, staying at their own school. The idea is to create a continuum. So if a child is already at 58 and they want to stay, they can. If seats open up, they will open up to the rest of the city.
Okay, yeah, that's, that's my question. For the kids who are not at 58 now.
Yes, so the school, the school, I'm not sure, say that one more time.
Well, no, I mean, for the kids who are not, who will not be at 200 University, either kids from throughout the district or kids who will come, be coming in from sixth grade at the other EL school, what, how do they gain admittance? Is it a lottery system?
I mean, to the, to the expansion, 58 expansion?
Right.
Well, we, we're multi-years ahead of that, first of all. So second is that if the kids who are at sixth grade at 58, again, it is my hope that always they will have first choice to stay in their school. If seats open, they open to the rest of the city. So if kids from the other EL school want to go to the expansion, will do that. If there is a high demand by parents for an EL high school, then, then so be it. We should create it. In fact, it is, it is our hoping, we are discussing that with, with, with the, with the school designer, because they open high schools. If you, if you, you may recall, folks, that Obama's first visit to a school in the US was an EL school in Denver that has a graduation rate near 100 percent. So we are talking to the designer about opening such a school here in the city. So if we do that, you're going to have a model. School that walls, foundation in commencement have EL components attached to it. They're not completely an EL school, but they have an EL component as well. But we are hoping to, as part of our portfolio increase or changes, to create a high school that's around the EL theme because we think there is a, a, a want for it. When you look at kids who are graduating the Science Museum charter school, which is now a K to six or pre-K to six school, we're hoping that will entice them to remain in the city, to go to our school district and continue to an EL program. Because like that, many of those kids, when they finish, go on to parochial or go outside into the suburbs. The fact that they, we're serving the parents of 58 school and seeing many of them, if they're all of them, seeing they're going to stay, many of those parents, parents were lost in the past to the suburbs.
Right. But those kids, but to follow up on that, for those kids who are coming in from the GCCS, I mean, they won't be given priority, but they won't be a lottery.
From the charter school?
Yeah, right.
No, exactly. Again, they'll follow like everybody else follows.
Okay.
Okay. Any last questions on this before I, I do a roll call vote on 638? I'm sure you're going to be bringing back, I mean, naming, the, the name of the school, the structure, who's going to be the principal, all that stuff as we go forward. Roll call votes to 638, starting with Commissioner Williams.
Yes.
Commissioner Powell?
Yes, and I want to thank the superintendent and our chief legal counsel for remembering that we have a policy governing the names of new schools. That policy hasn't even been acknowledged for the last two superintendents.
Thank you.
So, thank you very much.
Commissioner White?
Yes.
Commissioner Elliott?
No.
Commissioner Campos?
Yes.
Commissioner Brennan?
Yes.
Okay. The ayes have it. I'm going to move to Resolution 639. And just so you guys know, I am going to have us vote on Resolution 640 through 645 in a block because those are all gifts. If you guys want to discuss the gifts, you can object to that, but.
You'll see us in hell, right?
We're going to, we're going to move to Resolution 639. May I have a motion to approve 639?
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Vice President White, seconded by Commissioner Powell. Discussion around 639. Anybody have questions or comments around 639? I do want to say that Commissioner Campos is our representative there. She will be our voice at the Career Tech and Education, a very important component in this district. Okay? All those in favor of Resolution 639, please say aye.
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 Any opposed? Any abstentions?
I have to abstain, I would assume, because I'm in this resolution. Would I?
Uh, no. Don't you want to vote for you, don't you want to vote for yourself?
Sure, not receiving financial benefit from it.
You getting a salary for doing this? Actually, the board should be paying you for your time. You must want more, more five, I heard, I heard they need for six hours, so. Going to move the Resolution 640 through 645. These are gifts. Can I have a motion to approve Resolution 640 through 645, please?
So moved.
Moved by Commissioner Powell, seconded by Commissioner Brennan. Any discussion around these gifts? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Commissioner Powell, if you want to let us know that folks have given us these gifts?
For the purposes of expediency, I just want to say thank you to the Rochester Guild, the Estate of Eva Feld, Samson Jones, HSBC Bank, and VWR Education. Oops, I beg your pardon, I went too far. So, thank you to our generous donors.
Thank you. Thank you again. Resolution 646. May I have a motion to approve Resolution 646?
So moved.
Moved by Commissioner White, seconded by Commissioner Powell. Discussion around Resolution 646. Okay? All those in favor of 646, say aye.
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 Opposed, say aye. Okay, any abstentions? Madam Clerk, you've captured. Thank you. I'm going to take 648, 649, and 650 altogether. These are budget amendments. As you know, we have these from time to time. I know they were discussed in the Finance Committee. May I have a motion to approve the budget amendments of 648, 649, and 650?
So moved.
Moved by Commissioner Elliott?
Second.
Okay, moved by Commissioner Elliott, seconded by Commissioner, was that Campos?
No.
Brennan, okay?
Do we sound that much alike?
Any discussion around the budget amendments? Okay, hearing none. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? The ayes have it. Unfinished business from previous meetings, we have none.
Mr. President, just first point of, point of order of sorts. When I voted, when I asked to call the question and I stated it's a non-debatable motion, it didn't mean that it wasn't a votable motion, but I called, you know, and I asked that the parliamentarian be asked to weigh in. We managed to go through that process without voting on the call of the question.
I wonder.
But that is a votable motion. I checked with a parliamentarian privately, but the moment was already gone, so.
Okay.
I guess lesson learned, I guess lesson.
Call the question is voted on, is that what you're?
Call, it does not require a second, but it is a voted, it is an item voted on, like a vote to table.
That makes more, a lot more sense.
Well, I mean, what, what I would just ask, I mean, and everybody knows I'm a big fan of Robert's Rules of Votable, and I know people don't like long meetings. But I, I would just say as a professional, as a personal courtesy to everybody here, I joke around, I don't like sitting here for a long time. I'd be, like to be home watching CSI, and I know the folks in the audience probably want to go home. But it, it is important that we do let everyone answer questions regardless if we get on each other's nerves and we may be tired of it. I think it's important that we do.
There's also another lesson, though, and that is we should actually let our parliamentarian do his job.
I think that's true.
Well, let me just ask this question.
Let me move, I'm going to, let me move on back to, is that your point of personal privilege that you're doing?
Yeah, I just wanted, I wanted to be known, I knew we'd done it wrong, but the moment was passed. And I apologize.
Thank you.
You shouldn't, Commissioner, be allowed to say something here.
Too little and too late now, but, you know.
That's, that's you to shut up.
Unfinished business from previous meetings, we have none. New business, Vice President White?
Yeah, very quickly, I sent a letter to Mayor Duffy and to Gladys Santiago, President of the, of City Council, offering to create a mechanism to facilitate communication between this Rochester City School District and the, and City Council year-round, 365 days a year. It was a letter essentially asking that they recommend somebody to serve on our Audit Committee. And in fact, state law already authorized the Audit Committee to accept such outside participation. I have not received a response at this particular point, but I'm hopeful that they will recommend someone from their finance department to sit on our Audit Committee or, or anyone who they choose. They are at liberty to do that and it requires no board action. The other proposal that I made to Mayor Duffy and President Santiago was that we should, the board should be willing to consider to accept from City Council or from the mayor's office, someone to serve on our Finance Committee. There's no reason why we should not amend our rules to allow their participation. If the, if the grievance is that they don't know what we're doing 365 days a year, then come on and, and join us and, and hear what our concerns are, what our issues are. We have able leadership of, of that committee and, but we could always use additional help. That proposal, I think, though, has to be submitted to, to committees on our structure before it would be approved. I think our, our Committee on Intergovernmental Relations would have to consider that proposal and, of course, Finance would have to consider it as well. So, Mr. President, I, I defer to your direction and, and who it should go to first.
Well, I think, I, I, I would send, obviously, because intergovernmental conversations, I would send that to the Community Intergovernmental Relations Committee first and then probably followed by the Policy Committee because I think that would exchange, a change in the bylaws.
Well, I guess, I was thinking, President Evans, that that may go through board governance because.
Gee, thanks.
No, I think because we're changing our bylaws, which is, which is a policy, policy matter.
It definitely has to go through policy.
Right.
But this is one, yet another reason, we've been tripped up now three times over the course of this meeting. I, I know Alan wants to say exactly what I'm going to say. And that, and that is that this committee system that we have, once again, now three times over the course of this meeting, has proved to be dysfunctional and cockamamie and we ought to consider, unless we are, of course, expanded to 10 members, which may change the dynamics. I have a question of Commissioner White. First of all, I want to commend him for moving the discussion about collaboration between city and, and the school district in a constructive direction rather than resorting to, to some of the rhetorical stunts that we've seen from the Gannett newspapers in City Hall over the last few weeks, including blaming, blaming the school board every time somebody shot in this community. I think that kind of demagoguery is really out of bounds that we've had from City Hall and needs to be responded to. But Commissioner White, my question is, does your proposal contemplate allowing City Council members who, who serve on our, on our, on any of our committees to be, particularly the Finance Committee, to be voting members?
Well, you know, personally, I, I would endorse such an idea, but, but that has to be decided by this body. That's why it's got to go to some committee for some kind of deliberation. Let me just say, I, I agree with you that our committee process can be a bit cumbersome. I would hate to have this thing be tied up in four or five committees and, and we never see the light of day. I think it's a very practical, reasonable idea. Doesn't hurt anybody, doesn't take away, away anybody's authority. But if it's got to go through policy, if it's got to go through governance, so be it. But let's just not sit on this because this makes sense.
And I would just, again, remind my colleagues that committees are only advisory.
Right.
The, the action takes place here at the board. I, I keep saying that continuously. So the purpose of the committee is so that the, the debate can take place. But this is not the US Congress, this is not the State Assembly, this is not the State Senate. No committee has the power to stop anything from happening. Anything that gets stopped or, or doesn't happen, happens here amongst, amongst the seven of us. So, but, but I, I will send it to the Community Intergovernmental Relations Committee. I want them to discuss it. If you can come back with a recommendation, I, I would say at least by, before the end of March, I think that'd be great. And then if, if you just think it's necessary, we can send it to the Policy Committee and they can draft a change. So there's no objections to that. I'm going to have that done. The staff, board staff has, has captured that and we'll, we'll make that happen and we'll have that discussion.
Thank you.
Thank you. Second under new business, Commissioner Elliott?
I want to bring up the, the status of the military recruitment policy and I guess sort of just open this up. It, it will be, according to our policies, we need to have it discussed at one board meeting. Am I correct on that? I'm not very good on parliamentary procedures. So that we will go back to the Policy Committee for further discussion. Now, it was voted down in the Policy Committee, so, you know, I'm, I'm not sure to tell you the truth.
Well, someone can correct me if I'm wrong. I, I believe it takes two board meetings to change a, a policy?
It's a three-step process. First, there's a written submission of the proposed change to the board. It's then vote, it's then discussed at the next policy, at the next business meeting.
Right.
And then 30 days later, at the, at a subsequent business meeting, it's then voted on. That's the fastest timetable that we can go through. I, as long as I have the floor, I do want to say that I had a conversation with the superintendent on Sunday night on this topic. We discussed some of my concerns about it and number of inaccuracies about the way it's been presented. And I took two steps back and Superintendent assured me he was prepared to take some steps backward, including proposing policy language that addressed my specific concerns about making a greater effort to reach out to the families and get an affirmative response. Superintendent, if you want to speak further on that?
Sure. One thing that we're prepared to offer today to actually have further conversations about this. We, we do understand that as a body, we, we should not be aligning against federal legislation. And I also want to take a moment and say too that New York is not a, New York City is not a foreign land. It's part of New York State. We all have to follow the law in, in, in the US of A. There are many who do not like what NCLB states and, and the provisions in NCLB. That said, you know, many have tried to push against the former president in changing that. And as the, our president here says, that there will be opportunities in the future with Arnie Duncan as the new secretary. With the new president, NCLB will have to be re-authorized. And if we don't like the provision, there are ways of pushing to change that. We are the only school district in the county right now that, that doesn't exactly follow what is, what is being said. That said, I mean, there, there is a clear want in our community and by the board to, to look at this. And I suggest that we sit and, and look at language with our general counsel to see what we can and cannot do. So perhaps a meeting to sit down and look at what needs to be proposed. I have, I had my staff call districts across the country, through the council, the great city schools, through the American Association of School Administrators. We were saying that if anyone got a waiver, it would need to be San Francisco. Because, you know, with the Green Party in San Francisco, they probably would be the only ones who would have gotten that. We don't think they have a waiver. We're, we're still checking. They do? They do not. They do not have a waiver. So there are ways of, of pushing against this. We do have a bit of, of, of a dilemma. We do have the military pushing for, for what, for what they want and they threaten today to escalate. And I know, folks, that we have not been punished in the past. Perhaps people were not watching as much last year, the year before last year. But the fact is that we get about $50 million in, in, in federal funding. It's not about the money. And I'm not pro, well, 50 million, if you want to multiply by, by, by people, okay, if that's, initially, it's about 700 employees. So if you want to look at it that, that way. But it's not about the money. It's about making sure that, that we follow what we're supposed to be following. But of course, making sure that we also respond to the needs of our community. There, there are processes in this country for fighting laws and legislation that we think is, is unfair and unjust. And, and perhaps personally, I do agree that part of the law was written to target poor minority kids in urban systems. We don't disagree with that. Many of us educators agree with that kind of statement. But I don't think that we can decide which laws that we follow, which ones we do not. And that's, I guess, this is where I am with this, with this process. But we are, we, we want to, and I had a long talk with, with, with the commissioner as I drove back on the thruway for almost an hour, almost.
It's a long time.
Long time. And, and we need to sit and talk through this to make sure that we, one, do what needs to be done per federal regulations and per the wants of our community. I guess this is where we are at this point. But it is something that we cannot ignore. I know folks, many who say they want to keep it as is. I don't know if we had that option. Because we are a public entity, we are responsible to the state of New York and to the US government. At the same time too, we also have a community that we hear you clearly. And as you, if you heard, there were descending voices as well as supporting voices. But again, to our young people in the community, we are a nation of laws. If we don't like them, there are ways of changing those laws. We can't just say we're not going to comply. Otherwise, you would have all kinds of criminals, or folks who call criminals anyway, walking the streets. I heard a line once, watching a movie, and someone said the jails are full of people who think the law is stupid. I'm not saying this law is stupid or not stupid. I have my own personal opinion. It's, it's irrelevant at this point, honestly. But we need to sit and talk about ways of doing this. But we need to sit and talk about ways of doing this. We can keep talking about this, but we need to sit and talk about ways of complying, as well as making sure that we meet the needs of our community.
Right. Yep, one second. I just wanted to say also that, as I mentioned earlier in the report, the place to really express your concerns for changing this law is with this No Child Left Behind legislation being reauthorized, period. Getting the language changed to get this thing that I think is silly changed, but I think it's silly, but at the same time, we have to follow the law. Board members, you'll get in your packet from board staff. Ms. Flanagan did extensive research on this and surveyed every school in the county. I hear people keep saying Fairport, 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 but Fairport is complying with the law as it is, and we found that out from staff doing research. And also, Fairport doesn't get Title I funding the way we get Title I funding in the range of $50 to $60 million. So I think we can, obviously, we're not acting tonight. This was just, obviously, just as a discussion item, and we should have more discussions. But this meeting on changing the policy, I want to dedicate one meeting where this is the only item on the agenda, because that way, board members can express their views. We can get everything on the table, because if we do it in the context of a board meeting, we got a million and one other things to do. And it also will allow us to be able to take some type of action in rectifying the policy, and I think we can find that middle ground. Commissioner Williams, and then Commissioner Powell, I saw your hand.
Yes, I'd just like to say, Mr. Superintendent, it's good to know that you had an extensive discussion with Commissioner Powell, but I'd just like to remind you that there are seven board members, not one, and no one board member's personal preference, personal priorities or wishes should take preference over the six other members.
And I agree, Commissioner. The call was made, an email was made for conversation. Commissioner Brennan asked me to talk to you, and we spoke for, what, it was two hours, an hour and a half.
Yeah, a little bit about that.
I try to be accessible to all the board, and I don't keep information from the board.
Okay, no, I understand. But I'm just saying...
No, trust me. Exactly. But I'm willing to talk to anyone. But the one thing I do want to be clear about is that, you know, what we pushed to the Board of Education was a contradiction. Our General Counsel were very clear about that. Once the issue came up, in fact, I mean, just digress for a second. The issue came up through a phone call and a letter to us, to me, and demanding for the information per law. And I said, well, again, the experience that I've had across the country is that it's a given. This is something that districts do, schools do, per NCLB. When it first came out, many of us screamed and hollered, et cetera. Many sued, the U.S. government lost. And I assume we're doing this. So when I began to ask questions, and I found that we were not doing this. And we began to, of course, I believe even last year, not even, no forms were sent. No one sent any information, whether positive or negative, whether opting or opt out. So we were out of compliance perhaps two ways, at least by one. Nothing went to the military, which sort of makes the situation even more dire, because they were getting nothing from us as a school district. And for an urban system, really, it's a bit unusual for that to be happening. So we began to inquire, and we looked, we found the policy, and we began, and I believe that our General Counsel put it into writing, we sent a letter to the Board of Education explaining the situation, that we were being put in a position of either complying with board policy or federal legislation. Nothing has gone to the military. I know there were discussions about being insubordinate. We do understand our board policies. We will not pass them. When the military called and said, look, there is a board policy, we're working with the board to fix this. They will do what they need to do, of course. But the fact is, we will not act until this board tells us it's okay for us to act. And of course, if questions keep coming back, I will keep forwarding it to the board president. Because, again, military has to understand that I have a chain of command that I have to follow as well to make things happen. But the bottom line is that sooner or later, we will have to come to head on this situation and come to a resolution.
Commissioner Brennan?
Yes. First of all, I appreciate the difficulty of the superintendent's position, and I'm sure that the legal opinion that he received from our counsel was conveyed to him in good You know, we honor soldiers, we honor the people, whatever our views are about the war or about military service, whatever our personal views are. Those who, in the free exercise of their own conscience, make the sacrifices to make it possible for us to have democratic processes are best honored by our following our rules, by our following the law. This issue becomes a bit more nuanced, Superintendent Breshard, because I'm not convinced, although I'm sure the legal opinion conveyed to you was conveyed in good faith, that this is a settled matter. I know of no instance anywhere in the country where sanctions have been imposed. If they have, I'd like to see that. I have an open mind. And in light of the fact that over the course of the past eight years, that's been the case while NCLB has existed, I think suggests a flaw possibly in the legal interpretation. Equally important, and I don't mean to say this in an obnoxious or blustering way, you know, I hold you in extremely high regard and the Council, and you know that, again, contrary to comments by the mayor, I need to know those board, that you know which board members have been supportive of you, took considerable abuse from, you know, when you were hired, actually, and continue to support you. And I say that, but also say that the board makes policy for the district, and the superintendent cannot, no superintendent can unilaterally affect a policy. That policy has to be changed. And in this case, it's my understanding that a letter did go out prior to the policy being changed. I find that, and I say this with great respect, but I find that troubling. If this board is going to maintain its own integrity as an institution, which I think is the best way to honor our freedom and our democratic process, as you said very eloquently yourself, that chain of command has to be respected. I have an open mind about the issue, but am troubled by that report, if it's correct.
If I may address, I guess, all three pieces. I don't believe there's been sanctions, because I don't believe there's a single district in this country that's bucked the law. No one has. So everyone, from what we've gathered, complied with the law.
No district has...
That, as far as we know, no one. No one. San Francisco, no, complies with the law.
And you'll get a report in your packet, no district in Monroe County, except for us. We're the only ones that are breaking the law, not even Fairport, which everyone keeps saying, and Ms. Flanagan will present...
And I've spoken to Dr. Cala about, when he was there, what he was doing. It sort of was, and we can explain it as well, in some ways, he was complying, but looking to get a response from every single student. In a place like Fairport, it's a little easier to do that than in a place like Rochester. One high school versus nearly, what, 13,000, 14,000 high school students. There is a difference. Plus, Fairport now complies with the law as is. San Francisco, which has a very difficult, well, not difficult, but the kind of folks who would be the ones who tend to push against that, what we call, as you know, I'm on the governing board of the American Association of School Administrators, which is a national body for school superintendents. So we call and ask, and they say, we know of no one. And as if anyone has it, maybe San Francisco. And we checked, and they said, no. They did advise us, the only place that can provide a waiver is the U.S. Secretary of Education. Arnie Duncan can provide a waiver. Right now, no one else can do that but the Secretary of Education. So, I believe there's been no sanction, because no one's tested the system. When NCLB first came out, I believe Vermont did not comply with the law, but it also told the federal government, we don't want any of your money and give it all away. As an urban, poor district, we rely on that quite a bit to serve our kids. In terms of the policy, no one has surveyed parents in this district in the past two years. Nobody. So, no one sent letters out whatsoever. So, we had to gather the information from parents. Granted, the response rate was not very high, but we had to send the letters out. We have the information ready to go to the military. It hasn't gone. We have not violated board policy. It's sitting here in our offices, waiting for policy. Once, if the policy's changed, then we will forward. If it is not changed, we'll tell the military that we have to talk about this again. But the fact is that we've not sent any information to the military. There were statements made about recruiters in schools. Recruiters are in our schools, with or without the letters. And what many principals tend to do, by the way, is invite anti-war folks to be at tables next to the military, so students get a balance or perhaps a different view. So I would beg to offer that we don't underestimate our parents. Because our parents are poor, does that mean they're stupid?
Right.
Let's be clear about that. Perhaps we do do a better job at to make sure that our kids understand all the options available to them. There are many parents who want their children to go in the military, who want their children to get the information. Yes, the opt-in piece perhaps is the way to do that. We can argue that. We can also argue that some will not respond to the letters. What I'm saying basically is that, and I'm not talking to the board specifically, but even to the audience as well, that let's not just assume that our parents are not capable. Perhaps, again, building capacity, making sure that our children understand all the options, that if a recruiter meets them on the street, because, again, they need not come to their homes, they may meet them on the street or at a mall somewhere, that we build a capacity enough to be able to make informed decisions about all the options available to them. And for some kids, it may be the best option, and for some, it's not. Again, this is about choice, and I beg to make sure that we work on making sure our kids understand all that's available to them. But we have not violated board policy.
Commissioner Brennan?
Let everybody, let the other people go first.
Go ahead.
Well, first of all, I was not a member of this board when this policy was passed. Commissioners Powell and Evans were, and it's my understanding you both voted for it, is that correct?
No vote with the Dominican Garcia.
And that it was, the only person who opposed it was Commissioner Garcia. So everybody that was a member of the board in 2005 voted for this policy. That's my starting point. With respect to Fairport, the fact that Fairport's not vulnerable to having Title I funds pulled away from them only underscores the discriminatory nature of this. I, you know, honor military service. The most outspoken individual on this board about this issue has served 21 years in the military, Commissioner Powell. Her husband has been in both Iraq wars, and you were a drill sergeant at one time, is my understanding. You know, there's some drill sergeant language in some of the previous exchanges that we read about in the paper. But the fact is that nor is Dr. Cala subversive, the last time I checked. And his comment to me, when I...
What did you say?
Nor is Dr. Cala a subversive, the last time I checked. And when I spoke to him Sunday night about this issue, he said, you know, what's really offensive about this is that this kind of a thing is in education law at all. Of course, the military, for those who are, when you're talking about informed consent, is an honorable direction for some people to go. It's not for everybody. People have freedom of individual conscience, and that should be respected. When a move was made a couple of years ago to ban JROTC from the school district, I supported keeping it, because in that case, it was a question of informed consent and informed choice, and that issue ought to be resolved as a function of a person's individual informed conscience. In this case, we are talking about, the heart of the issue is whether or not there really is informed consent or not. And we're dealing with the nuances of who has to take the initiative to express their position. That's the heart of the issue here, and I think the concern that people here have expressed. And, you know, I accept that, I mean, I would be interested to know, you say that nobody has bucked this law, and that's why there has been no sanctions. That was not my previous understanding, so that's interesting.
Yes. Commissioner, we don't disagree that the law...
Uh-oh. It is bedtime.
We don't disagree that the law is skewed. We don't disagree. There's a lot wrong with NCLB. The fact that we have to test kids who don't speak English, give them a test, they don't understand. Imagine this, we have kids in our schools who don't speak English, and we test them for content in English. That's part of NCLB. There's a lot wrong with the law, and one of the reasons it needs to be changed, and many are lobbying, and the new president and the new secretary have committees together. I know some of the folks in that committee. I guarantee you will see changes in NCLB. I don't know about the military part. I don't know what's happening with that, but there'll be changes. We don't disagree with many of what's being said here. All we say is pushing an objective point of view, that there is a contradiction right now between our policy as a district, the board's policy, and the legislation. We need to reconcile and resolve.
Your interpretation of the legislation.
Well, almost everyone's interpretation, so...
Okay. Commissioner, I want to make sure I get conversation, and when this conversation will continue on this, this is not, this will not be the end of the military involvement policy, and we do have eight speakers also that have been waiting for five hours to speak. Commissioner White, I saw your hand.
There were a couple of speakers who spoke, students in particular, at the beginning of this meeting, and I want to clarify what I believe to be a misimpression, so I'm going to give some remarks on this, because a couple of students and speakers suggested the board agreed with this new approach, and that's not true. This has come up for discussion, as it should, but a couple of people suggested that the board had agreed to this change in direction, and that is not accurate. So, I have prepared some remarks, and I do want to share them, because I think it's important that the record be straight. You know, history tells us that sometimes in the pursuit of freedom, you have to pay the ultimate cost, that is death. And so it is that in the American Revolution, Civil Rights Movement, people died so that freedom could hold sway. Even American citizens die and make the ultimate sacrifice. Since the war in Iraq began on March 19, 2003, a total of 4,251 Americans have died. 3,416 of these deaths occurred while in combat. Equally tragic, 320,000 soldiers have suffered traumatic brain injury. There have been a total of 1 million, listen to this, 1,311,000 deaths in Iraq. The costs of freedom are no less significant in Afghanistan, where 660 American soldiers have lost their lives. The cost of freedom, that is death, is sometimes unavoidable. But death, the death of freedom, can and should be avoided at all costs. What do I mean by this? I mean that freedom and liberty should be sacrificed only after due deliberation and consideration has been given to all the laws, all the laws, and all of the facts which bear on the liberties and freedoms we so cherish. Part of the facts that we should consider here is that according to a 2007 Associated Press analysis, nearly three-quarters of U.S. troops killed in Iraq came from towns where the poverty index was below the national average. The AP analysis also told us that nearly one-half of the recruits came from towns where the percentage of people living in poverty topped the national average. It appears, therefore, that the greatest sacrifice, the highest cost for this war and other wars, is being paid by children who are of color and who are poor. These facts alone should give us pause before changing policy. We should also give further consideration before changing board policy to the conflicting federal laws, which are relevant to the dispute before us. On the one hand, we have FERPA, which is the Federal Education Records Protection Act, which tells us that we must guard the educational records of our students. On the other hand, we have NCLB, which, in a weird sort of way, interjects this ancillary policy, a provision that says we must surrender our children's academic records. This inconsistency must be reconciled before we take any action to change our policy. As I indicated, the pursuit or protection of freedom sometimes comes at a cost. It is said that we may lose Title I funding if we seek to protect our children's information. Consider this, given the risk that our children, that our soldiers are exposed to in Afghanistan and Iraq, shouldn't we be willing to face the remote risk, the very remote risk, that we might lose funding? Make sense? Look at the risk that our children are facing in Afghanistan and Iraq, and we won't, we're not willing to face the risk of losing some Title I money? And no one's saying we're going to lose it. I think as Commissioner Brennan has accurately understood, it was my understanding too, while people may have decided to comply with this, not a single jurisdiction has lost funding. That's a risk that is worth fighting for. That's a freedom that is worth a struggle. Thank you.
President Biden? Commissioner Elliott?
Let me just say that I'm actually in favor of us revising the policy and complying with the federal regulations. I think that... I think that this is not a draft, as I mentioned in the board, in the committee meeting, but this is an opportunity for choice. And there are people who love this country, who would want to put their lives on the line because they love this nation so much. And if it's an opportunity for them to be presented with this opportunity, then I believe that we should give them that opportunity. Now, people talk about, you know, this whole notion with races, race and people of color, blah, 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 blah. The fact is, is that it has given those persons of African descent opportunities where they could not find any, whether you agree with it or not. And so we're talking about choice. You know, it seems to me that this whole notion about this Privacy Act really is a smokescreen for people who don't believe in war, and I'm not saying I do, to say, well, we shouldn't, you know, we shouldn't have war. The fact is, if we don't, some nation is going to come and overtake this nation. Do we want that? We have to have, there are going to be people, there are going to be people who want to participate in the armed services, in the military, and that we should give them the opportunity to do it. As I said before, the fact that we have people who want to be police officers, people who want to be firefighters, and we have that program, the firefight program, these are high-risk jobs. And so whether we agree with it or not, we have some philosophical liberal idea of this whole thing. The fact is, is that somewhere down the line, we're going to need men and women to protect our nation. It may not be for everybody. And when people get the letter, all they have to do, if they choose not to do it, just throw it in the garbage. It is choice. It is information, just like you would get information from any other organization. And so I maintain that we should support, support choice. This is not a draft. And so that's where I am. And I probably would vote in favor of us making, complying with the federal law. I don't believe that the superintendent really should not comply, he should comply with federal law. This is not a draft. And I think that we do, the men and women who have served in our armed forces in the past, in my view, I think that we do them a disservice by saying we don't, we don't want, or we should not give students or others an opportunity to consider, my word is, consider the military as a career opportunity. Thank you.
Okay, any last-minute things, and we're going to continue to have the discussion as we go forward. Any last, so I can get to our speakers?
Yes, if I might. Mr. President, I didn't have a chance, it didn't seem appropriate to speak to this earlier, but Superintendent reminded us that for two years now, no letter has gone out. Very tactfully didn't say that the district has been out of compliance, not with NCLB, it's been out of compliance with our own policy. Our policy requires that we communicate with the parents and get their, and try to get affirmative responses. Now, I want to give credit to the superintendent for trying to rectify that. And if Erica Bryant had called me back after Sunday, I would have retracted my comment about insubordination on that grounds.
Commissioner Brennan, begin.
Yeah, she was here, but she's probably exhausted. So there's, I think, I'd like to take the conversation just for a moment to the concept that let us first abide by our policy, the policy that exists. I didn't talk to the superintendent on Sunday about the construction of the letter. I think I'm still troubled that the language in the letter that did go out in January was altered from that which represented the board's policy. But I do want to give kudos to the superintendent for attempting to abide by board policy as well as NCLB, and to say that we need to go further down that road. If, in fact, there would not have been a response from the military if they had gotten, if we had done what we were supposed to do, which is communicate to our parents, get affirmative responses, and provide those affirmative responses to the military, but we didn't even have that. Quite frankly, recruiters would prefer an affirmative list of students that specifically want information about recruiters than a list of ninety-eight percent of this district, of which most of it is junk, that they cannot turn into a recruit. I think the details of, that can be fleshed out in going forward, improving our policy on this point of the distinction between FERPA and No Child Left Behind. That was the gist of my conversation with the superintendent Sunday night, which is, and it sounded a little bit like Job and, I'm sorry, it's not Job, Lot and God arguing about how many righteous men are in the world, or are in.
Abraham, Abraham, not Lot.
It was Lot, how many righteous.
Hold on, where's our biblical scholar, is he here?
I'm, all right. So the reason I give this analogy is, I said, we have to do a better job getting responses back from our parents.
Right, that's the bottom line, right.
And at which point, we said, well, and I suggested that if we're not getting responses from the parents, then we need to get the responses from the students themselves. At which point, the superintendent said, well, how many responses does it take to comply with a policy like that? Does it take ninety-five percent? Does it take ninety-eight point five percent? And hence the comparison to the conversation with, between Lot and God.
That was Abraham.
How many righteous, how many righteous men are in Sodom and Gomorrah? So.
How many was it? No, I'm kidding.
It was Abraham.
I think Lot said, God said, if you find one righteous man, then he would save Sodom and Gomorrah, and he couldn't find one righteous man. So.
No, ten. He didn't say one, he said ten.
She's talking to a preacher, she didn't hear.
It used to be one man, but they expanded it to ten. By actual state, what a slave.
I think Mallory would go to the end.
All right, so we're all punch drunk here, we're tired, but the point being, I think that, number one, we can abide by existing policy. Number two, we can address this hole in our policy that's big enough to drive a train through, so that we can get to the place where people are more comfortable that we are doing everything we can to abide by No Child Left Behind, even as we satisfy our consciences.
Right. So like I said, going forward, we will have a special meeting to discuss the military eligibility policy, that will count as one of our meetings, and then we, next meeting, after that, we will act on something, and it won't be in the context of a board meeting because there's just too much discussion. And I will say that I'm not going to let anyone hijack our meetings, and I appreciate the folks that were here today. I think everyone was civil and made their point in a way that was good, and I hope we can continue to do that going forward. Now, I'm going to move to our speakers, I want to thank our speakers for waiting. First speaker is Glenny Williams, is Glenny Williams here? Deborah Jones, is Deborah Jones here? Charlie Richardson, is Charlie Richardson here? And just let me also thank our camera crew here at the district, we were off TV two hours ago, but they've been standing up the whole time, God bless them.
And we also thank our staff who've been here since six, seven o'clock this morning, who are still here.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you all.
There's no overtime, guys, forget it.
Mr. Richardson?
Mr. Evans, President Evans, Vice President White, and commissioners. Young fellow that I brought here tonight just mentioned to me that he wanted to know why you can talk about God in the boardroom, but you can't talk about God in school. And I thought that was very apropos.
Constitution.
I'm here tonight, my name is Charlie Richardson, but I'm here tonight on a completely different occasion. Okay, I'm here for the Community Advocates for Educational Excellence, known as CAFE, which we're represented tonight, CAFE, Faith Community Alliance, AQE, DAC, NCLB, Surround Care, Skip Generation, Konea, Parent University, and Neighbors Helping Neighbors. Would like to address some issues surrounding the Office of Parent Engagement election process. The process is totally illegal and should be investigated within ten days. The process is discriminatory, to say the least. Other issues we have with the procedure for elections is district-wide parent council are as follows. Your definition of community was in the letter. The nomination process for parents and community, the elimination of certain community members because of status. This letter presented to parents from the Office of Parent Engagement was not dated. The original timelines are not consistent with early information provided by the Rochester School District. Community members are excluded from the voting process. There is no signature to validate of the votes. All community groups represented share these concerns and look forward to your email response. Please change that by Tuesday, that's March tenth.
That.
It's not, or it says February the tenth on the bottom.
March tenth, okay. Thank you.
At five P.M.
Okay, thank you.
Rachel, yours.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Richardson.
May I have one half-minute?
Your time is still beeping. Ron Ring, is Mr. Ring here?